Going to call the meeting to order? Are you ready? Good evening, and I have called the City of Woodburn's City Council Meeting, City Council Meeting of September 23rd to order. We will start with the flag salute, which Counselor Cornwell, please lead us in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Cornwell?
Present.
Counselor Cabral?
Here.
Counselor Shab? Counselor Wilk?
Here.
Counselor Cantu?
Here.
Counselor Morris?
I'm here.
Mayor Lonergan?
Here.
Do not have any announcements or appointments? Moving down to proclamations, then presentations. We do have a proclamation regarding the Hispanic, Latino, and Indigenous Heritage Month, but I'd like Counselor Cantu to please read.
Okay. Proclamation. Hispanic, Latino, and Indigenous Heritage Month, September 15th through October 15th, 2024. Whereas people who identify themselves as Hispanic, Latino, or Indigenous from Mexico, Spain, the Caribbean, South and Central America have contributed to Woodburn's history, culture, prosperity, and success, and whereas Woodburn honors the rich and diverse cultural heritage and historical legacies, and whereas Woodburn's Hispanic, Latino, and Indigenous communities now constitute 57% of our population, including leaders, policymakers, educators, students, healthcare professionals, agriculture, military, public safety, industrial, the trades, business, and organization leaders, and entrepreneurs actively involved in our community and in mentoring our next generation. And whereas, the governor has proclaimed the month of September 15th through October 15th to be Hispanic, Latino, and Indigenous Heritage Month, and the City of Woodburn proudly joins the nation in celebrating the rich cultures and histories of Hispanic, Latino, and Indigenous heritages in Oregon. The state of Oregon and the City of Woodburn dedicate ourselves to working together to address the challenges that still face Hispanic, Latino, and Indigenous Oregonians in equity and access to the prosperity of Oregon. Now therefore, Frank Lonergan, mayor of the City of Woodburn, hereby proclaims September 15th through October 15th, 2024, to be Hispanic, Latino, and Indigenous Heritage Month in the City of Woodburn, encourage all of us to join in this observance.
Thank you. And the city actually had a recognition and a celebration a little over a week ago on Saturday, the 14th, down at the Plaza. Mariachi Band was there, the Fiesta Court, Yonera and Maricela were there representing the city. And they had invited the Mexican consulate to come down, who did a flag salute, recognizing the Mexican flag and obviously our American flag. So very nice ceremony and good recognition of what the diversity that we have here in Woodburn with recognizing the Hispanic, Latino, and Indigenous group. So I want to thank all of those that were involved. So moving on to presentations, first one is great lifesaving award for Officer Jackson Ryan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. City Council, all of us stand for this part.
Pardon me.
If I could have Officer Ryan?
Thank you for letting us do this this evening. It's always a pleasure to present these types of awards. Officer Jackson Ryan was raised in Salem and graduated from Spraygate High School in 2007. In 2010, he joined the Oregon Army National Guard, where he was trained as a field artillery fire direction coordinator. In 2012, Officer Ryan became a correctional officer with the Federal Bureau of Prisons, and in 2022, he became a Woodburn police officer and is assigned to patrol. Officer Ryan is married to Lynn and has a daughter, Anna.
May I?
On May 15th, 2024, at approximately 7:22 PM, Officer Ryan responded to the 1100 block of Mary Lynn Way regarding a 47-year-old male who was unconscious and having difficulty breathing. He arrived on scene within three minutes after being dispatched. Officer Ryan, who currently holds an EMT basic certificate, saw the female caller performing CPR on the patient. Without hesitation, Officer Ryan quickly took over administering CPR. Officer Ryan continued to provide CPR for several minutes until Woodburn Fire Medical Personnel arrived on scene and took over lifesaving measures. A review of the call for service revealed that after approximately 18 minutes from the time of the call, the patient had regained a pulse and was then transported to the hospital. Although the condition of the patient after being transported was not fully known in the aftermath, our department received a letter of thanks and recognition on June 24th, 2024, from the spouse of the patient. The letter read in part, "The first officer on scene, as a former EMT, took over proper CPR. I want to thank you deeply and sincerely for your efforts. Although my husband clearly suffered a traumatic brain injury, you clearly saved his life." The lifesaving efforts provided by Officer Ryan undoubtedly contributed to saving the patient's life by providing CPR in the critical first few minutes of a cardiac event. Officer Ryan immediately recognized the seriousness of the situation and acted in a decisive and purposeful manner. Through his actions, he provided lifesaving care without which the patient could have died. Officer Ryan's efforts are a testament to his dedication to duty and to those he serves. He is a credit to the Woodburn Police Department and his chosen profession. It is my privilege to present Officer Jackson Ryan with the Woodburn Police Department's lifesaving award.
So Chief, if I might be able to add, it just so happened a month ago, I happened to be at a Fire District Board meeting. And I was there to talk to him about the community center, which on a side note, they unanimously supported. But that aside, they were doing a chain of, what do they call it? Chain of Service recognition that night for the same thing that Officer Ryan was there, starting with the person that received the phone call, passed on to dispatcher, passed on to you, passed on then to the paramedics, I think, that arrived before the ambulance people. But unfortunately, I don't think you were there that night, that you were on duty or something, but the gentleman whose life you saved was there and was highly appreciative for everybody's efforts and working together. And so again, on behalf of the city, thank you. We're very proud that you're a part of our police force and did a wonderful job. To give somebody life is something that will go on forever. Thank you.
Thank you all.
I appreciate the members of the force that could come in and also show their support tonight, too. Like I say, this doesn't happen that often, but it's certainly something that recognizes the Woodburn Police Department very well. So moving on, our next presentation is Flock's license reader presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Marty Pilcher, Police Chief, you'll be seeing me a couple of times this evening, I'm sorry to say. So the first thing we'll be talking about is the License Plate Reader Project. The Police Department has examined this program extensively over the last few months and put it in our 2024-2025 budget. However, as you can imagine, a license plate reader system, an automated system that tracks and records license plates is something that the public would want to know about and that their representatives would want to weigh in in. So that's what we're here to do this evening. We're joined online by Kristin McLeod from Flock Safety, who provides, would provide this system. She can give an overview of the system and also ask some technical, answer some technical questions you may have. So to get going further on this, I'll turn it over to her, and I believe she's there, right there.
Chief, sorry, before we get started, can I ask you just a quick question? Because I want to counsel that you and I have talked pretty extensively about this project, and could you talk a bit about why you first come up with this idea, what the benefit is to the city that you saw that prompted this inquiry?
Yeah, and I thought I would follow through after her with some of those points, but I can talk about them now. From a law enforcement standpoint, it allows us to address very minor issues, or period minor, from a hit-and-run vehicle. Recently had a hit-and-run vehicle that we posted online, trying to see if we could get information about that vehicle. It can move all the way through any number of different things, stolen vehicles, vehicles connected to assaults, or vehicles connected to shootings or drive-by shootings, up to and including Amber Alert issues. Give you an example, if you remember earlier this year, a former police officer from Washington State killed his estranged spouse and kidnapped his child. He went through Woodburn on I-5. If he had taken 99E South and this system existed, then it would have picked up that car, and we would have known he went through the city. So it can cover a very wide range of issues that we in the Police Department address, some very rarely, such as an Amber Alert. On the other hand, things that we address very commonly, stolen vehicles, hit-and-run vehicles, other vehicles connected to criminal activity. And so it can also reduce our necessity to necessarily pursue somebody. If we know they have a plate, and then we can put that in the system, it'll get triggered when that car reappears, and we can make contact with it at that point in time.
Thank you, Chief. And then the presentation that I've seen and have gone through with the contractor, it made me think that there are really two other issues that the council hears quite a bit about. One of them has to do with the level of stolen vehicles in Woodburn, which has been a problem, a chronic problem for many years. A license plate reader would be very instrumental in helping the Police Department identify and recover stolen vehicles. And the other one has to do with vehicle-related shootings. I know that we've had some issues in Woodburn, and oftentimes there are vehicles that we really struggle with tracking down, and this would also provide an additional to the Police Department to help more effectively find and try to break that cycle. So that's why, that's why the Chief and I wanted to bring this to you tonight. Sorry, Chief.
That's okay. I've got a couple of examples at the end that I can read that are very specific to Woodburn, but allow Ms. McLeod to take over from here.
Good evening, council members. Thank you so much, Chief, for the introduction. I am going to share my screen. All right, can you all see that okay?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you so much. My name is Kristin McLeod. I am a Community Affairs Manager with Flock Safety. So my role, I have the privilege of coming and speaking to community members all across the nation and elected officials such as yourselves to really provide information and help answer any questions about our technology. So a little bit of history, Flock was started back in 2017 when our founder and CEO, Garrett Langley, was working with his own neighborhood after an uptick of crime had occurred and working with local law enforcement, and he really found that there was a need for getting objective evidence into the hands of law enforcement quickly to help eliminate crime. And ALPR, that technology, automatic license plate reading, has been around since the 70s, but he really found that there was an opportunity to utilize technology for good and to do so in a very ethical way. So we'll talk about that this evening. He recognized that, you know, police resources nationally are stretched very thin, and crime occurs daily, sometimes hourly, in communities, and being able to provide officers with an efficient, effective tool with information that they can utilize to help impact public safety is really key. With our ALPR technology, we believe that it really helps multiply the force, it protects first responders and the community, it's collecting and distributing objective evidence and getting it to the right user, to your officers. We also are able to engage the community to support and grow, so we work with commercial businesses as well as neighborhoods and HOAs that the majority of time share their information with law enforcement, so law enforcement is able to get that much more objective information and evidence. This is our Flock Safety platform, so these are, our flagship product is the Falcon, our automatic license plate reader, which is what we'll focus on this evening. We have other tools such as audio detection, pan tilt zoom live video, and also our Wing, which integrates third-party infrastructure into the Flock operating system. And this is how we detect trouble, and then we're able to decode that information and really make sense of mountains of evidence instantly with machine learning. And then we deliver that information quickly and efficiently, getting that evidence into the right hands with our Flock operating system, so providing a search tool, a map, mobile app, real-time alerts. So with Flock, we provide your department with that indiscriminate evidence, and these are fixed from fixed locations. Our cameras take still images of the rear of vehicles, and this is a really great depiction of what our cameras are capturing. It's really focused on the vehicle, not people. Flock also provides all of the maintenance so that your department and city staff can focus on keeping your city safe and prosperous and really leave all of the other work to Flock. Your officers will never miss a lead with these real-time alerts. Oftentimes, vehicle leads get missed due to lack of awareness, and many agencies can't have officers patrolling every road around the block, so this really acts as, you know, a way to capture vehicles of interest and get that information to officers quickly. Once a wanted vehicle passes by a camera in your community, your officers will be alerted to that wanted vehicle within about 20 seconds. We're integrated with the National Crime Information Center and the National Center for Missing Exploited Children, as well as we have a custom hot list feature, so again, when those vehicles that are wanted pass by a camera in your network, your officers will be alerted. Something unique to Flock is that we're able to create real-time alerts based even when you don't have full plate information, and so you can create an alert based on unique vehicle criteria, time, and location, again, so that you're never, never missing a vehicle of interest. Something really important, we are license plate recognition, providing objective evidence to officers about vehicles, not people. We do not have any facial recognition technology within our system whatsoever. We're not collecting any biometric or sensitive information. It's not used for tracking speed or parking violations, and the data automatically deletes every 30 days, which I'll highlight a little bit more in depth in just a moment. So it's proactive, getting your officers alerts to wanted vehicles. It's also investigative, so officers can access the system and look for information and images that are kept within the last 30 days, they're able to search for wanted vehicles or information as part of a criminal investigation. And then Flock cameras also can serve as a deterrent, so once the cameras go up in your community, oftentimes we hear that, you know, word travels fast around circles of folks that are intent on committing crime in communities, and it makes it a lot riskier to do so. Flock takes being a trusted partner very seriously, and so that's why we built in privacy and accountability safeguards into the system. So the first point is that the footage is owned by your agency, by the city, and will never be sold to private third parties by Flock, and this means that you are in full control of your data. I had mentioned the 30-day data retention, and then the images are automatically hard-deleted. So it really balances providing an investigative tool for officers with the privacy of your motorists that are just passing by the cameras and doing their day-to-day. It's, each image is giving a, given a time-to-live stamp, so at that 30-day mark, it is hard-deleted and unrecoverable unless your officers are retaining that information as part of a criminal investigation. All of our data is stored securely in the Amazon Web Services Government Cloud and is end-to-end encrypted, so even though no private information is contained within the system, we still take data security very, very seriously. As far as accountability mechanisms, a search reason and a user number are saved indefinitely, which creates an audit trail for administrators of the system to go and ensure that use of the system is in accordance to department policy. Again, no facial recognition software, not collecting biometric information, we're not connected to registration data or third-party databases, such as Carfax. We also have what's called the Transparency Portal, and this is free and optional to our law enforcement customers. And what this is, this is an example from one of our customers in another state. This is a Flock-generated, public-facing webpage, and it might be very small and hard, difficult to see, but what this does is it provides the community information as to how the department is utilizing the system. So here, there are some policy points that are outlined, so for example, acceptable uses of the system, prohibitive uses of the system, their hot list policy. And then on this side, the other side, you have some information on usage. So the big block of text is a listing of all of the law enforcement agencies that this particular department has opted to share their data with. And then there are some high-level metrics, such as how many vehicles have passed by their cameras in their community within the last 30 days, how many searches were conducted, et cetera. So again, it's optional and customizable, but provides the community information as to how the department's using the system. We also offer an insights dashboard, so this is for, this is an internal dashboard for administrators of the system, and that's where the Chief can look and see crime patterns and measuring return on investment, you know, are, how often are we utilizing the system? Is it really giving us what we anticipated? That's also where the audit search history will live as well. So we really wanted this to be plug-and-play for your officers, and our team, you know, infrastructure-free is what we're aiming for. So with the annual subscription, we take care of installation, ongoing maintenance, we proactively monitor the functioning of your cameras, we work to get the necessary permit, user training is provided, data storage, software updates, we handle all of that. And then lastly, I'd just like to share some examples of successes and use cases. And first, we are growing in Oregon, we're working with over 10 law enforcement agencies, including the four that we have listed here, Central Point PD, Jackson County, Sheriff's Office, Lawrence PD, and Medford. And here are some, we rely on our customers to share their success stories with us, and so here are a few from, from Washington that I wanted to share. This first one is from Tuck Willa PD. Though last year, officers received an alert that a stolen vehicle associated with a recent homicide had been detected nearby. Officers quickly located the vehicle, they initiated a pursuit, the vehicle eventually crashed and two suspects were detained. No injuries were reported, but they were able to locate those suspects and initiate an arrest. This is an instance from Liberty Lake, Washington. Liberty Lake officers and Spokane County deputies responded to reports of an assault that had occurred on a local hiking trail, and the victim told authorities that an unidentified male suspect had attacked her before fleeing in his vehicle. Authorities checked their nearby Flock Safety cameras and were able to identify and narrow down a suspect vehicle. They went to their collateral systems and were able to locate information on a registered owner that matched the suspect's description provided by the victim, and then they were able to locate that vehicle the following day and arrested the suspect, who is now charged with second-degree assault. Some statistics from Yakima PD, so in, from about April to January, when Yakima first stood up their ALPR program, they saw a return on investment really quickly. They were able to locate 596 stolen vehicles, 33 missing persons, and 276 stolen license plates. Something Chief had mentioned, but in addition to eliminating crime, we have also found that ALPR has been a huge help in locating missing persons. This is an example of a silver alert that was issued in Port Washington, Wisconsin. At 2:43 PM, a crime analyst had entered a missing person's vehicle into the Flock system and had seen that it had been in their city. Right at that same moment, that vehicle happened to pass by one of the cameras in their community, and it alerted officers to that vehicle's location. Within about an hour of that plate being entered into the Flock system, the car was located and that individual is reunited with their family. And then lastly, this is an example of how LPR was incredibly useful and really critical in a child abduction case. So this was a stranger-on-stranger abduction in Shambly, Georgia, that happened back in 2020. This baby was taken from mom, and the suspects fled in a vehicle. At 12:30 PM that, that afternoon, the Amber Alert was issued. At 1 o'clock, so a little under a half hour later, a search was conducted in the Flock system for a suspect vehicle. That description that was provided by witnesses, two officers, had been entered into the Flock system. And about an hour and a half later, they located that suspect vehicle across state lines. They were able to take that information, make a felony stop safely, and they arrested those suspects. And within five and a half hours from that Amber Alert being issued, baby was safely reunited with mother. So really, this one in particular really highlights the ability to provide officers and first responders with information, like finding that needle in a haystack. So in very critical, critical instances, we're able to get that suspect vehicle information into the right hand. And I will stop my presentation there.
Thank you. I do want the council to know that Council President Shab and myself were invited to this presentation about several weeks ago, and I've heard this and had a lot of questions and agreed to bring it to the council. That's not why she's not here tonight, but...
Mr. Mayor, I also attended that presentation, and during that presentation, Kristin, I asked you a couple of questions. I tried to be as adversarial as I could during that, assuming that there would be questions, and I'd like to ask you two questions that I brought up during our last meeting, because I thought it was an important, important response that you had. And we talked a little bit about the demographic composition of Woodburn and how Woodburn is primarily a community of color, we're an immigrant community, and we were concerned that these cameras would disproportionately, thank you for that, disproportionately impact segments of our community unintentionally. And I asked you about safeguards that would prevent that from happening. And then the other question I had, also about abuse, was about the use of the data, and what would prevent me, for example, from tracking the daily whereabouts of, let's say, the Assistant City Administrator? I could track him, for example, or...
That could be a good idea.
Yeah, or, or if I wanted, or whether or not I could subpoena this data for a civil case or a union dispute, or something like that. And I think the first, you know, the first question about creating a sense of safety for our community with these cameras and not creating a sense of uneasiness about the use of this data in our community is important. And then this other question about abuses of data. Could you touch on those topics again for us?
Absolutely. No, thank you for those questions, and we certainly understand that these are concerns, and we're happy to, to share more information and appreciate the opportunity to do so. So in regard to your first question about, really, the license plate reader technology is focused on providing objective evidence regarding wanted vehicles, this is not focused on people whatsoever. So, and how we do that is, number one, our, our solutions consultant will work with Chief and his team to really design an equitable deployment and looking at camera... Chief and his team to really design an equitable deployment and looking at camera placement. So that's something that, that impacts communities. And we take into account crime patterns, traffic patterns, ingress and egress from the city, and then, you know, really looking at the amount of cameras. But again, equitably deploying the cameras around the city. And again, to highlight that the cameras are only focused on capturing vehicle information, this has nothing to do with people. So your officers will be alerted to wanted vehicles that have been entered into the National Crime Information Center system, and your officers will only be alerted to wanted vehicles. And then your second question about, make sure I cover it, it was that...
What would prevent, I'm sorry, yeah, what would prevent, for example, me from using the, the data generated in the system, from tracking employees? Or, or if I wanted to, through a civil matter, subpoena this data if I thought it was relevant to a, a union dispute, or if I wanted to, or any other civil matter, is it accessible that way?
Thank you for that, and appreciate the clarification. So this system is to be used for law enforcement purposes only, and the vast majority of departments, so Chief will have outlined in his ALPR policy, exactly that, and that is also contained in our, in our language, in our contract. So it's, it's not for civil purposes, it's for criminal investigations only.
And Kristin, I think you told me, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that, that the data collected here is not used for, for example, in Oregon, cannot be used for immigration purposes, or for, I think you said reproductive, tracking data for reproductive health issues, or other types of, of matters that aren't related to criminality.
So that is something, again, that the majority of departments will include language in their policy prohibiting use of the system for those, for those examples that you just cited. And then I'll also highlight that your data, you are 100% in control of that data and who you choose to share that, that data, your camera data with.
Thank you.
I could add in a bit on that exact point. Our policy would prohibit officers from using it for any of those purposes. That is not our focus nor our effort. It's very, it will be similar to, or identical to, the manner in which an officer accesses a person's criminal history. So while we can run a license plate or other driver's license, criminal history is something very different. An officer must connect that to an investigation with a case number. And in this circumstance, an officer would have to do exactly that. We're conducting an investigation in which there's a car that may be involved in that. So there's a case number, there's an investigative reason for accessing the system, and that must be documented, and that would be part of our audit process. So I could not go in there and just randomly look to see if, for some reason, I wanted to find out if a family member was driving through town or what they were doing. I have no ability to do that, nor would an officer have the ability to do that. If they were to access the system and do that, they would face very severe disciplinary penalties, just as they would if they were to say, gee, I wonder if my neighbor has a criminal history, I'm just going to run my neighbor and find out that. An officer cannot do that, that is against our policies. And to do exactly that, and this policy in this circumstance would be the same.
It might be helpful for the council to know that people have been disciplined for the abuses of that system. There are severe, there are severe consequences for abusing CEGIS and other, other...
Thank you. Council questions, comments?
Maybe a question, certainly a comment. The focus of this is to read license plates and not occupants and vehicles or not. It's basically a license plate reader to assist with law enforcement for active pursuit or, you know, stolen vehicles.
Correct.
Fleeing, whatever. We already have in place a more intrusive photo radar system for 99 and 214, for speeding and red light violations. So this is less intrusive than that. Is that right?
Correct. That captures more vehicles that go through and do that, but they begin, it's, it's only captured if there is a violation. So, and so it is based not on, the cameras are not on at the, the red light or speed on green cameras, so not on all the time, that is, collecting every car that goes through that intersection. It's only activated based upon a violation. And then it's reviewed by an individual and determined if, there's a number of different circumstances into which those violations are not pursued. And it could be everything where the plate's not properly read, the driver is blocked, any of those things, eliminate that. You can see it in our...
Stranger.
Yeah. Well, he would get two tickets. But...
I am putting the fifth.
Yeah, you can see that in the, actually, what's coming up in the consent agenda is our Red Flex Traffic System report, and it shows a lot of the reasons that certain citations are eliminated from that process. But again, that is not just a surveillance system, like, for instance, our downtown cameras are recording, and then those can be accessed. But both this system and the red light system have to be based on an investigative need.
So my question is, do we have a sense of how many locations we would have, I believe you talked about Highway 99?
Right now, they're looking at 24 locations within the city. And each of those locations is aimed in such a fashion, it would get the back of a car, not the front, and record the license plate from that direction. So if it was on 99E heading southbound, it would be on the right or west side of the roadway, so it would capture, capture the two southbound lanes, not on the other side to capture the northbound lanes and drivers' faces, because that's not what we're looking for in this circumstance.
I do have a question. So it's getting license plates, but what if there's a certain period of time that you feel like something happened and you want to look at the camera to see that time period to see if you can identify what vehicles were there to, do you see what I'm saying?
Oh, exactly. And that would be one of the uses, and I'd give that as an example here later on. We've had circumstances, we've had drive-by shootings, and we've had individuals present who are, who are very uncooperative. But we get information that maybe there's a described car, and then we're able to enter that in the system and see if it was in that area. And if so, then we can follow up and see if we can identify that car. On the other hand, if we won't get told anything, and it happens at 2:00 in the morning, we can look at the system and evaluate if there were cars leaving that location, and then conduct an investigation following up from that. But again, it would be based solely on a criminal investigation, not on just a random, we wouldn't view, let's say, all the cameras in town. We would view those that potentially a fleeing vehicle had, a route, a fleeing vehicle had taken.
Can this be a deterrent for the people that are driving really fast in the middle of the night and doing cookies and things like that?
No, that's not what this system is for.
So Chief, if there, if a homeowner wakes up and notices his car is stolen, calls it in to 911, that person, that person will enter it into this program, the license plate?
Along with entering it into the NCIC system for a stolen vehicle, it would be entered in this system.
And then roughly 20 seconds later, it gets out and it'll start printing out or see if that license plate has crossed any of the other cameras that are out there?
So we could go back and check cameras to see if we saw it leaving. Then it would be entered in the system, and if it goes past a camera, it would trigger and then be communicated to officers. So it is possible, I don't want to make this as if it's a panacea. That person could leave town on a route where there are no cameras, and we would not know that the car had headed to Portland or Salem. On the other hand, it may leave one of those routes, and then we would be able to look and see if it did prior to the entry of the vehicle, because maybe it got stolen at 2:00 in the morning, and the person got up to head to work at 7:00 AM and realized it's gone. Or we would then see it later that day or the next day on the cameras, it would trigger it, officers would then know it was in a particular location or it passed a particular location, and then go look for that vehicle.
So carrying this on, if there are cameras located on entrances to I-5, and we see that it has gone within, I don't know how long, but several minutes, that it is headed south on I-5, then an officer or somebody could notify Salem or something that there's a stolen car on I-5 headed southbound?
Correct. We could let, through our dispatch, we could let OSP know, or Salem know, Marion County know that the vehicle was last seen five minutes ago, heading onto southbound I-5.
Okay. And if it's an amber alert, there's a little bit, bit more cautious, more people are probably out looking at, I mean, could this system work any faster to...
I would have to defer to the expert on how fast it acts, but there would be, if there's an amber alert, it would not just be local, it would be in, I assume, and I'd defer to Ms. McLeod, I assume that would be in every LPR system in the state or the area, and so that if it passed that location, then we would know that it was last seen, maybe heading south on 99, and we know it's approaching us potentially, or it's left us and is continuing to head southbound on 99, so we could notify Salem or Marion County or OSP.
What would you anticipate your cost-benefit ratio to be here? What's, how many...
I don't know, yeah, I don't know that I can place a number for the police department on it. If it reduces stolen vehicles in the city, that would be a definite boon, particularly families who may not have the insurance on their car that covers theft, they have this, the basic insurance on their car, they have an older vehicle, these are our most commonly stolen vehicles, is older Toyotas, older Hondas, these are vehicles that may have 200, 300,000 miles on them. The keys are sewn, that you can basically stick any Honda or Toyota key in the door and into the ignition and drive away. And so that could be a great boon to those individuals, because we can locate their car much quicker or locate it in total at all, and return their car to them, even though they don't have the theft insurance, which it does occur. So there would be a benefit to that. Also profound benefit to our investigations in the cases of shootings. I've seen statistics that talk about shootings cost the community $500,000, homicides well over a million when it talks to the entire cost of something like that, taken into account. If we're able to prevent some of those or reduce those, that's a true cost. And then on top of it, it increases our ability to cover the city. As the city grows, it puts us in more locations consistently, whereas it's very frustrating for residents when they call and I tell them, please call on that issue. We may be there in three minutes, or we may be there in 25 minutes, it all depends on what else is going on in the community. This gives us the ability to be in that location or nearby at all times and be able to follow up on that investigation.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
We never discussed the cost of this.
We haven't gotten into that.
Oh.
We did, we did place it in the, in the budget, and I presented this to the Budget Committee in May. So it does exist, the budgetary amount necessary to, to fund it, and that was approved. But I thought, as did the city administrator, it's exceptionally important that this be brought to your attention because of its import to the residents and, truthfully, an understandable fear that this is, for lack of a better term, Big Brother.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, so the purpose of the presentation tonight is to introduce this proposal to the City Council and to the community. We would like the public to know that we're, we're discussing this and that we're thinking it through and answering questions, particularly the Big Brother aspect of it, and the fact that this is intended to enhance public safety for our entire community and that there are checks and balances in place to protect the data from abuse.
Right.
And if the council is comfortable with the project moving forward, then we would move forward to develop the contract, and we'll place it on the agenda for a future council meeting, for the City Council to approve. But, but it was budgeted for, was approved in the current year fiscal budget. We just think that the public awareness is important, because these cameras will go up and people will see them, and we want them to know that, you know, it's a proper and that it's been thoroughly discussed.
You know, there's another aspect of public awareness that, that I think this program could be useful in. I, I say that as civil libertarian, but as a deterrent, you know, to the extent that we can get the word out that if you're driving a stolen car, don't be driving it in Woodburne, because we'll be able to track that.
Indeed.
Kristin, a question have, historically, you've obviously been operating this for several years. Any, if there was an organized stolen car ring, a gang, and they were anticipating work in the city, any history that there had been any malicious or work on the cameras to remove the cameras in anticipation of this?
I'm not aware of that in particular, and really in general, kind of nationwide, vandalism of the cameras is very, very low. It's really a rare occurrence and just does not...
Okay, thank you. Council morris, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I think, I think my only comment, I think everybody, if you've been watching the news, if you haven't been living under a rock for the last couple of weeks, they, this is how they caught the guy in Florida, was through the license plate reader just recently on the assassination attempt. The thing that, as we're talking through this, that was kind of flashing back in my head about preventing crime and also solving crimes quicker, if you think back to the time of the bank bombing, where during that time period, people were happy to jump off the freeway, rob a bank, and then hop back on the freeway with no thoughts of getting caught or anything else, they would be able to use this tool, I think, to either speed up the investigations or deter those kind of behaviors too. So that's something we haven't talked about in a long time, because it's not a fun subject, but anything we can do to enhance our ability to catch people quicker and deter people is a good thing, in my opinion.
Good points, thank you. Anything else? Okay, well, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you for your time.
We look forward to looking at the rest of it. Thank you, Kristin.
Thank you, Kristin.
Thank you. Good night.
Okay, moving on, we have a work session to discuss our urban growth boundaries. A brief work session.
I did hear that, Mr. Mayor. Chris Carr, Community Development Director. With me on the line, I believe, is Renata Wiegler, Special Projects Coordinator. You hear Renata?
Yes, can you hear me?
Sure can.
So thanks, Chris, Mayor, members of the council, Renata Wiegler. Sorry that I'm not there tonight. This is a project that's been long in the works, many, much of this will be kind of going back to the history of work that you've already completed in 2023. But before we scheduled the public hearings, which we're anticipating will be in October, and notice will be going out to property owners, publication in the paper, posting on the property, we wanted to have a brief work session to remind you and the public of what brought us to this point and what's coming next. And I'm going to say thanks to Heather for driving the slides for me, just to make that easier. So next slide, please. So tonight, we're going to look at what we previously completed in the Buildable Land Inventory, or BLI, and the Economic Opportunity Analysis, or EOA. We'll look at the reserved lands that by state statute require, are required to serve as the first sequential first-party lands if completing a UGB expansion for Woodburne, and we do have previously designated reserve areas. And we'll talk about next steps. Just as a reminder, as the mayor mentioned, this is a work session, so no action is being requested of the council this evening. Next slide, please. Just some history on what a buildable land inventory and economic opportunity analysis is. An EOA analyzes and forecasts growth in the city's industrial and commercial districts, ensuring that we have an adequate 20-year supply of developable land for business and jobs. We do that by also analyzing and quantifying the amount of vacant and partially vacant employment land that we currently have available in our urban growth boundary. This, again, is set by a state statute in every community in Oregon with the city limits and urban growth boundaries required to do this. We're also required to do this for housing, but that's a separate process. We're not talking about, our housing needs assessment tonight, a separate process. We are purely talking employment land. Next slide, please. a separate process. We are purely talking employment land. Next slide, please. So, what the BLI and the EOA provides for us, it's an economic forecast for the city based on population projections and growth trends that we've seen historically in Woodburn. It identifies our employment needs and opportunities for the next 20 years, again, set by statute. We look at 20-year timeframes. So, essentially, it's a supply and demand analysis for employment, and as I noted in that last slide, it's required under Oregon Revised Statute goal line. And there's a process, and also, the administrative rules kind of guide cities on what we're required to include in all of these. Next. This is just a component, so you see the Economic Opportunity Analysis in the lower-left box, but it's a component of your comprehensive plan, just like your transportation system plan, housing needs assessment, your infrastructure, water, sewer facilities plans, these are all components of the comprehensive plan. So, the city has a transportation system plan that was completed in 2019. Chris's department is completing a kind of sub-area plan, or update to the TSP, to look at some of the industrial areas that have grown quickly in our community. So, these are, it's an iterative process. We're constantly looking at these documents and updating them. Recently, the city adopted an update to our Parks Master Plan, so that number, it's a 2023 Parks Master Plan now. I think the time before that, it was maybe dated back to 2009. So, we're always updating components of our comprehensive plan to make sure that we're planning for the growth that we're seeing. It also helps with funding some of those identified needs. Next slide, please. So, back to the EOA, components that we're required to have in our EOA. We look at economic trends, we look at targeted industries. Who do we have now as employers? How do we help them remain and grow here? Are there other industries that we don't have and have a need for, or that we're targeting? We can include all of that in our EOA. It includes a forecast of job growth and land need, that's part of the BLI, or Buildable Land Inventory process. We compare the two, and I've got a couple of slides showing that to you. And then ultimately, we have findings and recommendations. Next slide, please. This document, or what you're seeing here, is from the adopted EOA. So, again, in January of 2024, the City Council adopted our 2023 EOA via ordinance. It showed that we currently in Woodburn have approximately 12,000 covered employment jobs. It's not all jobs, but it's data that we're able to, is publicly available from the Employment Department. We worked with Johnson Economics on this work. So, we currently have approximately 12,000 jobs. Our 20-year forecast is an additional 6,800 new jobs. That's a 2.3% average annual growth rate in, in our employment, and that's pretty much the rate that we've been seeing since 2010. And so, that's what was adopted by the City Council earlier this year. Next slide.
Which is a very good, healthy growth rate.
Yes, it is. And, and, you know, it shows that the city with the, the housing growth that you're seeing, as the, you know, Mayor, as you mentioned, we're seeing housing growth. We've had to increase density because of mandates from the state, and as I'll point in a different, a later slide, is we want to make sure that we're also providing employment opportunities when we're having an increase in housing. So, this, this next slide here is the Buildable Land Inventory map. This is adopted by the City Council. I want to note a couple of things about this map. We have removed all public and residential land, so the city limits looks a little strange, but this is just our employment land. And city staff worked closely with Johnson Economics on a site-by-site assessment, and we conducted outreach to a lot of these local employers of, you know, what type of employment do you have now? What's your ability to grow on the site? We use a lot of state safe harbor language on what types of assumptions we can, and where can we accommodate, be it infill or vacant sites, the future 6,800 jobs that we're going to see coming in the future? So, it's a iterative process where we look at the sites very closely. And so, again, this was all done in, in 2023, but I, it's, I think it's a nice map to show you where kind of your employment centers currently are, and where that potential for growth is. Next. This is in the adopted EOA, also available on the city's Planning Department website. So, what did we end up with when we looked at that, that map that I just showed you with the buildable land inventory? We still have some lots for commercial that we either have vacant or infill, and we have some industrial sites. You see 17 0-to-5-acre industrial sites. But what's flagged here is that the city, in the red circles, the city has little to no remaining vacant commercial lots that are between 5 to 10 acres, or vacant industrial lots over 20 acres in our UGB. So, this is factual data of what do we have remaining to accommodate those local employers that we currently have that want to grow. We've got some really great examples of like Do It Best, that found a way to grow on their site. They, they, they're a local employer, they want to stay here, they were somewhat constrained, it's a tight site, but they found a way to expand and get more jobs on that property. So, we want to be able to continue to employ, or provide those opportunities working with our businesses. But what this graphic or this table shows you is that we have no remaining larger lot, commercial, or industrial sites. And when we're looking at our targeted industries, we've got some properties where an employer needs, you know, needs to employ five people, fantastic, smaller site, but we know that looking at our adopted targeted industries, we need to have a diversity of different properties to accommodate an employer who needs five, or even, you know, two employees, or needs 20 to 50 to 60 employees on their property. So, having a variety of different sites is very important for every community. So much so that in Oregon, I, you know, in the media, the Business Oregon, our state's Employment Department Agency has spoken about what an issue it is for the lack of large lot industrial in Oregon and in our region. And it's important for our communities to kind of have a diversity of different sites, so that we can meet those future job needs for our community. Business Oregon even gave the city a grant recently to help us update our transportation system plan, to help serve and make sure that we can serve large lot industrial. So, that's the state agency saying, we know how important this is for you to have a different diversity of housing, or I'm, excuse me, sorry to say housing, employment types. And, you know, we'll work with you to make sure that those properties could be served. Next, please. So, we looked at that buildable land inventory, what do we have, what are our future needs to meet that growth? And this is where we ended up. We have a deficit of 380 acres of employment land, so I'm mixing commercial and industrial there, but more simply, 107 acres of commercial and 272 acres of industrial is what we're lacking. And we need to meet, meet that. We need to do something in order to ensure that we can continue to provide employment opportunities here in Woodburn. So, again, this is work that was done in 2023 and already adopted. So, the public hearings that are coming before Planning Commission and City Council are not on these topics that I just presented to you, but we thought it was important to kind of remind you of the process before we talk about those next steps. Next slide, please. This is, these are just a few components of the comprehensive plan. So, when the city updated your BLI and EOA, the council also updated our, our comprehensive plan goals and policies that are related to economic development, including those that are shown here on the screen, such as, quote, "The city shall provide an adequate supply of industrial sites to attract targeted firms." And it is the policy of the city to provide for development that whenever possible, will allow residents of the city of Woodburn to work in Woodburn, to encourage a healthy, diversified, and sustainable job market within the city with a range of sizes, industries, and pay scales. So, again, we've done the work of what is our demand, and what is our supply, and so that's why we're here tonight to do a presentation on kind of what are our next steps. So, next slide. Please, thank you, Heather. So, back in 2015, the city's done some comprehensive plan maps amendments and zone changes since then, but 2015 was the last time the city really did a, a major amendment to your urban growth boundary, and that included employment land and housing land at that time. So, this is, this is our current comprehensive plan map on the left that we're seeing, and in the red circle is an urban reserve area. These are fairly new to, to the state of Oregon. This was identified in our comprehensive plan as part of our last UGB expansion, but it's not in the urban growth boundary. It's still outside of the urban growth boundary, and it's called an urban reserve area. It's in the city's comprehensive plan, and it was also part of the adopted agreement called an Urban Growth Coordination Agreement with Marion County. I will note that as part of the, the application that Chris and I will be presenting to Planning Commission and City Council next month, we don't have a discussion about our urban reserve area and how large it should be. Should this lot be in it? Should that lot not be in it? Should we make changes to our urban reserve area? It is our urban reserve area, and that was determined back in 2015. It was established in coordination with the state and the county. So, what you're seeing here is our industrial urban reserve area, and then we have an aerial to the right, if, assuming everybody's familiar with that, but Parr Road intersects it, and to the west, I-5 kind of runs along it, but that's our urban reserve area. That was previously designated, again, in, in 2015. Next slide, please. These are the tax lots, so we have eight lots total, and the acreage. So, the sum of this acreage for the urban reserve area is 237 acres. I will note that these property owners, in 2023, when going through the process of updating our buildable land inventory and economic opportunity analysis, those property owners were informed that we were going through that process, knew about the public hearings and that adoption. I will note that we have already informed as a courtesy notice, these property owners, again, to let them know, okay, we're moving on to the next phase of an urban growth boundary expansion. So, those property owners and abutting property owners have actually been notified as well. Next slide, please. So, this is where we are in this process. In January 2024, that's when council adopted the BLI and the EOA. That was following public hearings before the Planning Commission and City Council. It was in March of this year that council adopted Resolution 2230, which directed staff to initiate the legislative amendment process to expand our urban growth boundary. So, council noted, we have a deficit, we have an identified need, we have a deficit in our community, and in alignment with our comprehensive plan goals and strategies, we want to make sure that we have not only a balance of job opportunities for our residents, but we have a balance and diversity of land types to make sure that we have diverse job opportunities in different sectors available to our, our residents, or those that might want to come into Woodburn for employment. Staff spent about six months coordinating with the Department of Land Conservation Development, internal reviews, working with the Planning Department, and legal counsel here drafting the findings, just a, you know, step that every community needs to go through for these legislative amendments. And we've had some meetings with Marion County to coordinate. We have to coordinate any sort of map amendment with the county as well, because if we make a change to our comprehensive plan map, that has an impact to the county's comprehensive plan maps as well. So, around September is when, after meetings with the state agency and the county, we said, okay, we, we are ready to start scheduling our public hearings, anticipated to be in October. September 4th, the notice, legal notice required to be sent to Department of Land and Conservation Development, 35 days in advance of any hearing, was sent. And we sent courtesy notice to the property owners within the urban reserve area, and also abutting the urban reserve area. This week, we are, we are mailing notice under the Woodburn Development Ordinance, ordinance requirements for any interested parties. A second notice going to the property owners were required to publish in the paper, and were required to, to post on those properties, that map that I showed you. So, this was a good week to come before the Planning, or, excuse me, City Council, and say, okay, you know, we're starting the process, and you will have a hearing in October. Later this week, Chris and I will be presenting to the Planning Commission, also a work session, as a courtesy to just say, okay, in October, this is, you know, what we're coming back to you on. So, word can start to get out. Mackenzie and Chris can speak to the legislative amendment versus quasi-judicial process, but you, you might see in the paper that the, the notice has gone out, or if you drive by the property, you can see, you'll see that we're, we'll be posting on those properties this week. So, tentative schedule for Planning Commission hearing is October 10th, coming back to City Council on the 28th. That is pending recommendation from Planning Commission. So, any legislative amendment requires a Planning Commission, the Planning Commission to hold a public hearing, and if they're ready to make a recommendation, then that recommendation comes to the City Council. So, tentatively, October 28th for council. While Marion County staff and commissioners are aware that we have initiated this process, they have yet to schedule their hearings, so I do not have that date. They want to have the city complete our local process, and then they, they will move quickly to schedule their hearings. Again, because their map would change. Pending concurrence from Marion County Commissioners, then it comes back to the City Council for the second reading of the ordinance. Next slide, please. Just a few notes. In our adopted Economic Opportunity Analysis, this 237-acre urban reserve area of the eight lots will not meet all of our identified need for the next 20 years. We will still have 106 acres of commercial land need for, for the next 20 years, and 36 acres of industrial. Those will be different types of industrial and commercial properties. The state does not require us to meet all of the need at once, and City Council wisely noted that we have a serious deficit of large lot industrial. And so, you, as a council, can say, let's do what we can to meet that immediate need now. We have a reserve area, it's identified as meeting that need, and we will continue to work the, to address the remaining need through, through the next process. But our urban reserve area is identified by state statute as the first priority land, if we have any identified need. If the legislative amendment is approved, that does not mean that these lands will develop immediately. Future annexation, so even though it will be brought into our comprehensive plan map, they still need to be annexed into the city, and a zone change applied at that time. That is a separate land use action from what we are asking the Planning Commission and City Council to review at this point. No change to the city limits will occur. And as a condition of annexation, master planning is a requirement that's in the Woodburn Development Ordinance. So, there's more work to be done, even after a UGB expansion, and that's typically done by petition of the property owner or owners when they decide that they are ready to apply for annexation. That is all I have at this point. So, Chris is there to see if there are hands up or any other questions. Mackenzie may wish to weigh in, but that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Renata. Very good presentation. Questions?
Questions? Comments? This is an important study for the city. And moving forward, it's important that we are on top of it. And for, for us to continue our growth, it's going to be a, a work in progress. Chris, you have anything to add?
Not at all. I'll see you next month.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Sorry.
Okay.
Clarify the map that she showed to us. You don't have to put it up again. Brighton Point is not within the city limits. How does that work?
That was a fantastic catch that I wrote down right here. The map hasn't been updated, but it will be when we return in 30 days. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, we do have one more presentation that did not make the agenda. And it's my honor to do that tonight. On Friday afternoon, the, our Trailblazers came to town and recognized Woodburn. They'd been making a weekly trip, going to five different cities. Woodburn was the last and the best that they, they came to. They, working with Moda Help, they brought their Tooth Taxi down and showed the, the community what they, what they offer. The Tooth Taxi goes to different schools around the, our community and other communities, offering free services, x-rays, and dental work to middle school and younger kids. And the Blazers had a very excellent presentation and working with a lot of kids on skill sets and, and shooting. They brought their 1977 NBA championship trophy down, along with a couple Blazer dancers guarding it. But a very impressive gold trophy that I remember well when, when Portland won it. And they recognized Woodburn. And the community showed that the Blazers are not just a Portland team, that they are an Oregon team. And they started with a Woodburn jersey, number 24, which I'm assuming is for the year. And they had Lamar Hurd and Michael Holton, who are two of the Blazer announcers and media people that came down and, and worked the crowd and were very positive about the Blazers, about Woodburn, and really cared about what, what was going on. Mr. Rau, will you please come up here? On behalf of the city of Woodburn, Marcelle, can you get a picture of Mr. Rau?
Excepting this.
There is a...
Is this part of the jersey?
Yeah. Yeah. I want to read, "The greatness of a community is most accurately measured by the compassionate actions of its members," which I think covers Woodburn pretty good. Gave the, the degrees of Woodburn. So, Mr. Rau, I will hold.
Yeah, there you go.
You can wear that to work tomorrow. So it was nice seeing the Blazers was in town. And like I say, I think there were a couple hundred kids. And Counselor Kentu made it. Did you shoot a hoop?
I did not. They couldn't train me, darn it.
But they, yeah, a lot of, a lot of freebies and, and Blazer spirit that, that they brought. So it was, it was good. Moving on, business from the public. This allows the public to introduce items for council consideration that is not already scheduled on the agenda. If anyone from the public wants to come up and speak for something that is not already on the agenda, I will limit their comment time to three minutes. Please come up and, and sit and speak. Tonight, do not see anybody, and we didn't get any cards filled out. So moving on to the consent agenda. Items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and may be adopted by one motion. The item may be removed discussion at the request of the council. I appreciate the city recorder to please read off the items allowed on the consent agenda.
The items on the consent, consent agenda are as follows. Woodburn City Council minutes of August 12th, 2024. Woodburn City Council Executive Session Minutes of August 12th, 2024. Acceptance of easement at 1600 Tomlin Avenue. IT Support Services Agreements. Redflex Report, June through August 2024. Monthly Financial Report. And Building Activity for August 2024.
Does anyone on the council wish to call up anything on the, included in the consent agenda? Hearing none, then I would entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Still moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor. Signify with an aye.
Aye.
The motion is the same, thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on, we do not have any table business, so we do have a couple of public hearings. First one is the liquor license application for Restaurante and Cantina Los Dos Compass en Casa Marquez. So I will open the public hearing. And this is an item that had been on the agenda in the past. We have had a, a public hearing on it already. And there's a different application for that same, same site. So I will turn it over to your chief.
Marty Pilcher, Woodburn Police. As you recall, on July 22nd, council meeting, a liquor license application was presented by Luis Fernando Panigago Fernandez for the restaurant located at 553 Front Street. Staff had recommended that the council not approve that application for a number of reasons, including the applicant's history in which he had been arrested while underage for DUII with a BAC of .11. Further, in 2022, his vehicle was located, abandoned, middle of the street after it had struck a fire hydrant. There were beer bottles found in the vehicle. The owner of the, the vehicle, Mr. Fernandez, or rather, Mr. Panigago Fernandez, was located at home. He appeared to be intoxicated and had no information as to why the vehicle was abandoned and left in the street in those circumstances. Further, that location does have a history with the police department in the last year. We've been there four different times. One of those times, an intoxicated customer had broken out a window. Another time, an intoxicated customer bit a female and smashed her phone. A third incident involved a known female gang affiliate in which a gun was pulled out. And then the last incident was an argument inside of the bar. Since then, the application has been reapplied. And this time, the applicant is Alfredo Panigago Fernandez. However, the point of contact remains the same. Luis Fernando Panigago Fernandez, as does the owner, is listed as the same individual. Staff's recommendation is that the council does not approve this application. But I believe a gentleman here this evening to speak.
Thank you.
You can sit there if you want.
Testimony by the applicant.
Hello, I'm Alfredo Panigao Fernandez.
And your address, please, sir?
My address?
Just, you can give me your business address.
Oh, business address is 553 North Front Street, Woodburn, Oregon. Home address is 765 South Pacific Highway, Woodburn, Oregon. I apply this, I apply these applications because me and my brother wanted to open a restaurant together, and we had talked about this for years already. And when we saw that his application applied, so I applied. I was like, well, maybe it'll change me, it'll be different because I don't have a criminal record. And when I saw that mine got applied, now I, I have to come here and ask, like, why, why does, why is it disapproved?
Our position is it still lists the same individual as the owner and the point of contact. The only difference has been you've now been listed. And that was the reason that staff made the recommendation.
Thank you.
The address that Luis put is only his mailing address. He receives the mail through there. He doesn't live at my home address. Well, my home address is actually my parents' home address. I still live with my parents. He's living with my grandparents right now. So that's probably why you guys got the same address.
Well, that would indicate that he reported then an incorrect address. Because the address we received from him, from Luis, was 765 North Pacific Highway, number 5.
North Pacific Highway? That's incorrect. 765 South Pacific Highway.
Okay. But that's not where he lives now?
Uh, no.
Okay.
But that is his mailing address, so that would be like where he, the reason why it's, it's...
Okay, we would change that then, but it doesn't, that in itself would not change our position.
Okay.
Anything to add?
Well, I feel like it's, it's a great letdown that we could not approve this license because it's something we really worked for. I mean, there was three previous owners, from what I've heard, and none of them did any effort to remodel or anything. And we put a lot of money into it, and it's just, it's a big letdown, you know? Hopefully, you guys can change your mind, and we can somehow make this work.
There's still quite a history of things that have gone on there.
Yeah.
Part of why we're, there's been, I mean, problems there with why the police is making this denial.
We do have concern that an individual who has acted in that manner at a young age would then be able to effectively operate an alcohol establishment. That's the basis of our, of our concern.
What if someone else is in charge of managing the alcohol? Or managing, managing that establishment?
I can't give you an answer at this time, although each, each application we've got lists Luis Fernando Panigago Fernandez as the owner. And he's the individual upon which we've based a portion of this background investigation. That is our normal procedure and our responsibility to do. We did, we have no issues with you. The report states you have no criminal history, you have valid driver's license, and, but he's still very closely connected to the business, as you can see by the application, with him listed as the owner and as the point of contact.
Okay. What if the business was under my name instead of his?
You're free to apply under that circumstance. We'd review it under those, those, those circumstances.
I would have to reapply, and you guys would probably reconsider it, or...
We would reconsider any application you made.
All right. All right. Well, that's all I have for now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, I do not see any...
I have a quick comment, really quick, I know.
Go ahead.
The, the success of your business shouldn't be based upon whether or not you have alcohol there. If you have really good food and it's a family environment, we'll be there. We'll be there to support you. It shouldn't be based on whether or not, you know, there's liquor there.
That is a good point. We can do it without the alcohol, and we have been doing it without the alcohol. But it's also a big part of the vision we had for this business and part of the culture as well, since, you know, we're Mexican, people like drink alcohol. So, yeah.
Okay. We do not have any other proponents here. Do not have any other opponents. So I will close the public hearing. And council discussion. Any other comments?
I agree with Mary Beth. I'd like to go down and just show their business and the way they have it set up. Some support. And I will do so.
Then we need a decision, a motion?
Well, based on the fact that the previous owner that we've already denied is still the owner listed with the new owner, I would move that we not approve the liquor license.
Deny the application.
Deny the application.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify with an aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you. Motion passes. Next up, we have a public hearing for supplemental budget for acceptance of a grant for the police department. So I'll open the public hearing.
Marty Pilcher for the police department. I'm not sure if Tony Turley's going to discuss.
No, I'll be happy to weigh in on it, Chief. So before the City Council tonight, this supplemental budget, the police department applied for and received $189,610 grant for a commercial theft, anti-theft program, and received, received the funding. So because this wasn't anticipated as part of our budget, the supplemental budget will amend the budget to allow us to receive the, the revenue and to make the expenditures to implement the program. I'd like just to, I'd like to say thanks to the police department and to Chief Pilcher for pursuing this. Commercial theft has been quite, quite a problem in Woodburn, and we've lacked resources to adequately address it with our retailers and the community. But this will provide us the opportunity to do that. It's been quite successful in other communities, and I think we're kind of looking forward to seeing this get off the ground. But before we can receive the grant money and implement the program, we have to complete this supplemental budget. And the chief might have more to say about the program if he wants to.
First of all, it wasn't me, I think, city staff, and also Sergeant Stewart and Lieutenant Kimberlin for their work on this. The grant is quite comprehensive, and it includes some very important things that will not only impact organized retail theft, but also our abilities in the future. And that includes thousands of dollars for officer time, but also significant money for training. Selbrite Premium Investigation Tools, training for four Selbrite premium operators, training for Selbrite for two detectives. Selbrite is the, is the computer program that is used to download information from phones. That, of course, is only done through a search warrant and probable cause. But it's very effective in both addressing organized retail theft, but also many other crimes are either recorded or there's evidence of those involved. And another part of it is a couple of pole cameras we can put up. But the most important part of that is training for officers to be able to put the pole cameras up themselves. In the past, we've wanted to move cameras based upon an investigative need, and we always have to reach out to other agencies to do that. And a lot of times, they're not available, and that's either Portland or FBI. And they've got other things they're doing. Needless to say, they're paid by other constituents. This will allow us to move those cameras around at need. And so these are a lot of things that will affect us, both in this emerging issue, but in the future.
Thank you. Questions? So Chief, is there any stipulations that this grant needs to be used primarily at the outlet mall? Or is this something that's going to benefit the whole city?
No, it benefits the whole city. We have two primary other locations, Safeway and also Walmart. And so, but we can use it anywhere in the city where there is evidence of organized retail theft. So it's not just the, the outlet mall, which is an understandable concern that one area is going to get all of the, the work.
Okay. Moving on, any testimony by proponents? No one's going to be against it. I will close the public hearing. Council discussion. Good idea?
Great news.
It is really good. It's, retail theft definitely is a major problem and growing. And, and unfortunately, it's organized. I mean, we have people coming down from, from Portland to clear out merchandise that we have. So, yeah, I'm glad to see that we can do something to help combat that. I would entertain a motion then to accept.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. It's a resolution, which would be the next on the general business item.
Oh.
So, no further action on the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll move on to general business. First item is Council Bill 3261.
I would like to introduce Council Bill 3261.
Thank you. Council Bill 3261 has been duly introduced, and as the resolution requires one reading only, may we have the reading, please, by title only if there's no objection?
Council Bill Number 3261, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget and making appropriations for the general fund for fiscal year 2024-2025.
Thank you. Any discussion? And may we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Cabralis?
Yes.
Counselor Kentu?
Yes.
Counselor Cornwell?
Yes.
Counselor Wilk?
Yes.
Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Council Bill 3261... Council Bill thirty-two sixty-one has been duly passed. Thank you. Next up, we have Council Bill number thirty-two sixty-two.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to introduce Council Bill thirty-two sixty.
Council Bill thirty-two sixty-two is a resolution, and as the resolution requires one reading only, may we have that reading by title only, please, if there's no objection?
Council Bill number thirty-two sixty-two, a resolution establishing the National Incident Management System, NIMS, as the standard for incident management in Woodburn, Oregon.
Thank you. And we have a staff report.
I swear, this is last time I think you'll see me this evening.
We keep you busy.
Marty Pilcher for the Police Department. This is more of a formality. The National Incident Management System was created in two thousand and four as a result of information and studies that resulted from the nine eleven terrorist attacks. The, the city, our emergency operations plan follows the National Incident Management System, and also the officers are trained in the Incident Command System, which is part of NIMS. But this is a formality that we need to adopt this formally. It's part of our ability to apply for federal grants, particularly FEMA grants in that area. So I ask that the council support and pass this resolution.
Thank you. Questions? Discussion? And may we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Morris?
I gotta find the mute button. Aye, yes.
Counselor Cornwell?
Yes.
Counselor Wilk?
Yes.
Counselor Kentu?
Yes.
Counselor Cabralis?
Yes.
Council Bill thirty-two sixty-two has been duly passed. Thank you, Chief. Next up, we have a word of contract for transit vehicle purchase.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is authorizing the purchase of a transit vehicle. It's a thirty-five-seat bus with two ADA stations that will replace an older vehicle that's about fifteen years old with more than two hundred thousand miles. It's nearing the end of its, it's actually hit the end of its useful life. This is a grant-funded project, and actually, our required match is funded by another grant. So no city dollars are required to actually purchase this vehicle. We've been fortunate to receive a significant amount of grant funds for the transit program in recent years, including funds that are funded by the statewide transit tax that everybody sees as a one-tenth of one percent deduction on their paycheck. And so that's funded the expansion of service in transit and actually the acquisition of vehicles to replace our aging fleet. Happy to address any questions you may have.
Questions?
Yes, two questions. Electric vehicle, is that still on tap?
It is. It's a very slow-moving project. It's a very complicated one because of the infrastructure that's required to be constructed, and because a lot of that, because it's federally funded and we are installing underground infrastructure, we have to go through an environmental review process. And so the state has now released funding for us to do that. Very, it's an abbreviated environmental review process, and then once that's completed, then we'll release funds for the purchase of the vehicle and the charging equipment. So we're slowly getting there.
And as far as the vehicle that's reached its useful life, does that get turned in somewhere for some cash back allowance at all?
We tend.
Sell it to Wilsonville?
Yeah, there you go. We, we do actually sell our surplus transit vehicles. They don't bring a lot of revenue, there's not a big market for.
Well, sometimes they're just not sitting around.
Yeah, but we do, and we've done that in the past where we've kind of had them sitting around, and it needed to come up with a better approach, and we've actually got a pretty good approach now for selling our surplus aged vehicles.
And that fund, whatever you make, just goes in transit?
Goes back into the transit program, yep.
Thank you.
So our passenger rideage is, is up, that shows that we need this, this vehicle?
It is, yeah. We've, we've seen an increase, kind of slowly continuing to build since we've gotten through the worst of COVID. We're still a fare-free system, which is still a little bit unique. We didn't raise a lot of revenue from charging fares, and just given kind of the demographics of Woodburn, we've found it to be very advantageous to continue operating fare-free. And we've been able to secure grant funds, again, through that statewide transit tax program to compensate for the cost of providing a fareless system.
Seems like over the years, we've done very well utilizing federal or state funding for our transit program.
We have, yeah. This is, depending on whether we're in a big year where we're purchasing an electric vehicle or not, we can be anywhere from a million to two million dollars in transit costs budgetarily every year, and we spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars' worth of city funds to leverage that. And those are, those are state and federal funds that we're able to secure.
Good job.
Great.
Other questions, comments? I would entertain a motion then. From somebody?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to buy the bus.
Second.
All those in favor of purchasing a transit vehicle, signify with an aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close for the same? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We need to put a price figure in that, or are we okay? We're good, okay. Moving on to utility assistance program funding.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Usually Jesse would handle this, but very, very unusually, he is homesick. I can't remember him ever getting sick before, so he's on the mend, he'll be back with us soon. But we are asking you to approve a new utility assistance program grant agreement with, or authorize us to enter into one with Love Inc. of North Marion County for the continued administration of the utility assistance program. This would actually commit to funding them up to forty-five thousand dollars per year, which is approved in the current budget. The reason we need a new agreement is because we've been operating off of ARPA funds that we've been allocating for utility assistance for a number of years now, and that money has dried up. And so now we're back to funding the program through city general fund dollars, and that's just going to require a new agreement. We have access to, to their dispersments, so we keep tabs on it. We know where the money is going, we know when we give them an infusion of money for the program, and we see those dispersments, and they're very transparent about it. They've been a great partner in administering the program, and really, over the last few years, they've been dispersing anywhere between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars a year in utility assistance. And that, for us, is water and sewer utilities. The maximum award is three hundred dollars per account per year, and they tend to average somewhere a little over two hundred dollars per, per customer, two hundred to two hundred and twenty dollars. And so it's, it's a much-needed program that the benefit, the community benefits from greatly, and we're happy to continue providing it. Love Inc. representatives weren't able to make it tonight, but they wanted to pass along their appreciation and the support that the council has provided them in administering this program.
I agree with you, I think they do a very good job managing, going back, looking at the history of some of the other people that we have had, and they're doing it. Yeah, Love Inc. looks like they're better than, better than most.
Yeah, we, they're actually the third provider that we've worked with, and we kind of laid out some of that history in the staff report. Wasn't really very successful with the first two, you know, attempts to get this program moving, and then when we finally identified Love Inc. and brought them in to run the program, you can really see a dramatic change. They're very local, they have local office hours, they, they know the community members very well, and it's just been much more successful.
And the community knows them.
Yeah.
Which is important.
Yep.
Yeah, comfortable. Questions? Comments? I would entertain a motion.
I would make a motion that we approve a new utility assistance program grant agreement with Love Inc. for the amount of forty-five thousand dollars for continued administration of the city's utility assistance program.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify with an aye?
Aye.
Next. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Jim. Do not have any other business? Do not have any land use actions? Do we have a city administrator's report?
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor, the League of Oregon Cities Conference is coming up, and everybody in the city council is eligible to attend, we have some staff going. And this year, Jamie and her team are going to be putting on a presentation about our tourism program, and it's a collaboration with our surrounding community jurisdictions for, you know, a statewide audience. So it's kind of an honor. If you haven't signed up to go and you want to go, I don't know that it's too late, but let Brendan know right away, and if you've already signed up to go, then I'll look forward to seeing you there.
It's in Bend?
It's in Bend this year.
Middle of October?
Yes.
Having gone in the past, I highly recommend it for anybody that is available to go. It's a good, very educational time. Have a good time just meeting other, other counselors and mayors.
And then, Mr. Mayor, the final thing is that I've been talking with the community development director about coordinating, scheduling upcoming hearings, and in the next day or two, we'll be pulling everybody for your holiday calendar. We may need to add a special city council meeting between now and the first part of December, depending on how things fall out. So we want to know where you're going to be and if you're going to be available between now and the first part of December. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
So Mayor, council reports. Counselor Morris, do you have anything for us?
Mr. Mayor, do not.
Thank you. Counselor Kentu?
No, nothing to report.
Counselor Wilk?
I will be at the League of Oregon Cities Conference next month and looking forward to that. I also attended the Fiesta this year. I think I was there each of the three days, and it had been a while since I'd been there, and I got to ride on the fire truck with Mary Beth and her son in the parade. It was a pretty fantastic event this year. I don't know what the total attendance was, but I would say it was a pretty, pretty successful event.
Over twenty-five thousand.
Despite of the rain.
Yeah. Saturday evening.
Yeah, we were really on track prior to the lightning, the electrical storm that shut the lights off for a while, but I think our estimate was fifteen thousand turnout for the parade, and I'm going to say, I'm going to look at your twenty-three this year?
I want to say it was twenty-four.
Twenty-three, twenty-four? We were hoping for, for thirty, and I think that we probably would have tipped it, had not been for Saturday night, which is a prime turnout night, having to shut down when we did, but still a very good year.
Counselor Corales?
To report.
Counselor Cora?
I just feel like there's a lot of things to be involved with, with the city, not just as a counselor, but as a whole, and I encourage people to just look online and figure out where they can go and how to participate.
Thank you. Couple things that I have. One is the education of our community for the community center ballot measure coming up in November. There's been a lot of support out there. People will be able to see that in the voter's pamphlet when it comes out. So I thank everybody that has been working and involved in that. And just a couple comments on tonight. This was a very big meeting, you know, what, what we accomplished, and I want to thank the staff and certainly Scott, you know, coming up with a, a plan that we've been talking about, kicking around for years, but actually a plan for affordable housing is the beginning of a, of, of a huge project for the city. It's a big undertaking, and I know that we're not anywhere there yet, but, but this is good. And then going on with the buildable lands inventory, you know, this took back, and Renata said that we came to an agreement in two thousand and fifteen. Well, it started probably about two thousand and eight to get to two thousand and fifteen, and that was a, a big push and a lot of work by a lot of, a lot of people within the, within the city. And hopefully, it's not going to go that way again, but we've started already, and it shows. We wouldn't be where we are today being able to buy some property for affordable housing if we hadn't finished that in two thousand and fifteen. That has helped us get us where we are today with the growth, the commercial and industrial land that, that we, we did have. And I'm sorry that, that we ran out already. But, no, I want to thank the city and everybody involved, and certainly the council, for seeing this through tonight. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second?
Move second, all in favor, signify with an aye?
Aye.
Close.
Aye.
Thank you, Eric.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.